Good morning, Hatfield. Welcome to the April 9th meeting of the Select Board here at Hatfield Memorial Town Hall. First order of business, we're gonna try going through this fairly quickly. First order of business is community forum. Obviously, there's nobody here. Does anybody have any announcements?
Yes, I've got a couple. After a long and distinguished career with the town of Hatfield, Mr. Louise Slish has stepped down from elected positions as both town clerk and town treasurer and to recognize her many contributions over the last thirty-six-plus years. We're planning a social on the sixteenth of May at 6:00 PM, Northampton Country Club in Leeds. Tickets are available from Mrs. Edwina Pomassano, the town clerk's office. Louise certainly deserves a send-off, and I encourage you to participate and get your tickets early. Again, that's the sixteenth of May at 6:00 PM. Second item, the Open Space Committee and Board of Selectmen invite residents to attend a ceremony dedicating the Terry Blunt watershed and conservation area. Terry passed away not too long ago. He was a noted conservationist, served the town in a number of capacities, as well as the entire Pioneer Valley, and certainly deserves this recognition. The event will be held 11:00 AM Saturday, 20 April. Rain date is on the 21st. If you go down Pantry Road, turn left onto Mountain Road, it's about a mile ahead on the left where the event will be held. And there'll be a couple of folks from the state, as well as some number of local participants. And then finally, mark your calendar for evening of May fourteenth, the annual town meeting. That's it.
Okay. Head.
I'm good. Thank you.
All right. Next minutes.
Motion approved by the Selectmen minutes of twenty-eighth February two thousand thirteen.
Second that motion.
Motion made, second. All in favor?
Aye. Motion approved by the Selectmen minutes of nineteenth March.
I got a couple of changes on that one, Jeff, just corrections. Second page in, under announcements, the Selectman Lesko said the Board of Health has applied for a $1,500 grant. It's applied and received.
Right.
And also on page four, second line down to the right, where it says, he said, he and Chief Beldon should be had some equipment trailers. Yeah, that can go. Or, I'm not sure what your intention, at the town barn, where, I think, Jan, you were talking about that. It just didn't make sense.
Where are you?
Okay, the second, second, oh, it starts at Chairman Adamsky, over here. The word "at" doesn't fit. I'm assuming it should be "had," some equipment.
Has.
That's all I had. Couple of corrections.
As amended.
Second.
Okay, motion's been made, second. All in favor?
Aye.
Okay, we're gonna go a little bit out of order today. Phil has an appointment off the transmission line, so Phil, if you wanna...
Just a couple things. Thank you for moving me up in the process. Just a couple updates. We did receive a letter from Mass DEP regarding the waste ban compliance plan. I'm working on that. It's overdue, so I'm working on that now. Another thing is that the plan for the water transmission main, I don't know if Selectman Boyle has kept the rest of the board abreast about the construction plan. Permitting is ninety percent complete. Received approval from the railroad, Mass DEP, Division of Wildlife. The only thing left is there's one question about ninety-one bridge crossing with Mass DOT, which is gonna be rectified, so they see no problem in that. So the permitting should be complete. The plans are in the final stages, and construction should begin hopefully in July. That's the plan, so. The other thing is with the River, Connecticut River Dyke rehabilitation, that permitting is just about complete. Construction has to take place during low flow, so that's gonna be July, August, so I expect the bid to go out May, June. Yes.
I just wanted to know, the water line, how long will it take, starting in July?
It's a year process. It's a year, it's a year build. Could, hopefully, hopefully, hopefully. Well, the plan is during the good weather to build into the, where it has to go into the roadway, and in the off months, it'd probably be up on Rocks Road out of the way, so I don't see anything that could hold back that timeframe unless they hit tremendous amounts of ledge, but they did the test borings every fifty feet, and they know what's there, so.
Okay.
Okay.
Anything else?
Unless you have something.
I think I'm all set.
Not at this point. You're gonna be back later.
I don't know how long the meeting's gonna take place.
Okay.
But if there is time, I will stop back.
Okay.
If not...
You know where I am.
Thanks, Phil.
Thank you.
Okay, thanks, Phil.
Thank you.
All right. Let's go back to where we left off. Fiscal year fourteen budget, warrant articles. If we wanna go over the warrant articles, you can find them, I just have them here. We wanna read word for word, or do you wanna just touch base on...
We can just, some of these boilerplate. First article concerns the elections and the positions that are coming available for election. Second article, authorizes the Board of Selectmen to accept gifts, grants. Third authorizes the treasurer to conduct banking business. The fourth, appropriate two-hundred-and-fifty-one thousand, this is... We have a number, that's a good point, we brought this one up. On Article Four, we have a specific number. However, the Chapter Ninety allocation is still...
Yeah, I got it right here.
...in a float.
Should say a sum of money in there.
Governor's budget says, what, three-hundred-something, seventy-something thousand dollars. The legislature says, well, not quite so fast.
Three-seventy-seven, three-twenty-four.
Three-two-four. But notice how it's...
But this provisionally...
It's three-hundred-seventy-seven, three-twenty-four, based on enactment of the bond bill.
Right.
And of new revenue to support Chapter Ninety funding at three-hundred million. This is provisional allocation for information purposes only. So should we put a sum of money?
Yeah. Yes.
So we don't...
Probably won't.
It probably will be closer to the three-hundred, you know, three-hundred million, excuse me, three-hundred thousand. The fourth article, over a period of years, there's been some residual funding in, excuse me, the fifth article, some residual funding in certain accounts, and they've never been spent, so there's been no debt or obligation incurred against it, but we're just taking them off the books.
Yeah.
There's a series of old construction projects.
These were all borrowed, I believe.
Yeah.
Yes.
So they're unissued balances that we're rescinding. There's been some discussion about medical marijuana, so we don't go through another exercise, as we did with the solar issue. We have the article here to put a moratorium on locating a medical marijuana dispensary in the town of Hatfield to give, for a period of one year, essentially to give the Planning Board an opportunity to define its requirements in terms of zoning.
I have some slightly revised language on that one, on the advice of Town Council, and so I just, you know, that's how it will appear on the warrant.
Okay.
Okay.
It's the same.
It's the same. It's just...
New language, but it's the same, essentially declaring a moratorium for a period of time so the Planning Board can do what it needs to do.
It also makes mention of marijuana treatment centers, which is also a separate thing from the dispensaries.
Okay. Article seven is a zoning change proposed by Planning Board, portion of a lot on one-twenty-three North Hatfield Road, changing the current rural residential, including it in light industrial. Article eight, the Planning Board held some hearings concerning mixed-use development and incorporating those changes here with a proposal from the Planning Board. The Planning Board also, you know, engaged with various parties on solar energy bylaws, and there's an article here that will address that.
Are these gonna be at town meeting, or are people gonna have to come to Town Hall?
These have to be available. Right.
These have to be available at town meeting, correct?
Absolutely, there'll be...
Yes.
There's gotta be a stack of them for town meeting voters to...
No, but I mean, as the article reads, as on file with the town, you know, the town clerk's office, so I just wanna make sure that these will be at town meetings.
Well, it's gotta be available out in the Town Hall here, too.
Right, absolutely, but I'm saying at town meeting, you know.
For all the zoning amendments, the Planning Board will have handouts.
Okay.
And plus on Article seven, which deals, well, actually, Article seven and eight also deals with the zoning map, so there'll be a map on the walls showing the proposed changes.
Article eleven...
Article ten.
Well, Article ten relates to the one prior, the solar array, in case there's some issue.
Yeah, I've got a comment on here. It needs a deadline. No moratorium, I don't believe, can be put on unless there's a deadline that, when it has to be done by.
Yeah.
Okay, completed by. And my suggestion before was to, upon completion of the bylaws, once they're put in place and approved by Attorney General's Office, then this moratorium can be lifted. Yeah, I discussed this with Town Council, who reminded me that this would be, this is a zoning, would be a zoning moratorium.
Uh-huh.
And the Planning Board would have to hold a public hearing.
So we don't have time for this.
So it's too late. There's also a, you know, we also discussed the fact that, you know, when municipalities, you know, enact moratoria, it's to buy them time to study the matter and, you know, come up with, you know, a plan of action. In our case, you know, the Planning Board has already got a proposed zoning bylaw, so even if this were, were to pass, if Article nine failed and Article ten were to pass, it's highly questionable if the AG's office would approve it because of that, because the rationale for having a moratoria isn't really there.
Okay.
So you're saying we need to delete that one?
I would suggest yes.
Okay.
Article eleven, this is Planning Board and Board of Selectmen, to see if the town will vote to accept Massachusetts general law concerning expedited permitting of development activity. And this, part of this, part of the background of this is one of the suggestions we had from the state regarding our grant submission for, to improve the water and sewer infrastructure on Route Five and Ten with, if we had adopted this Massachusetts general law, it would help boost our scoring in competition with other communities for those scarce dollars. Article twelve, vote a sum of money for the completion of the first phase of some renovation work here at Town Hall, meeting space, and lots of handicap accessible bathrooms. Next one, sum of money to complete the work in the Town Hall garage, and we're putting in there not only, of course, it's constructed, it's a build-out to house the fire, police, and ambulance functions, as well as their vehicles. Article fourteen, appropriate a sum of money from overlay surplus for a new roof at the Highway Department garage. Appropriate a sum of money from sale of timber, which was dedicated to the Water Department solely, to fund the installation of a water mixing system, the water tank up at the reservoir that's to keep the water from freezing and scouring the inside of the tank. It's adopting a Massachusetts general law that would allow us to establish a, what's called a reserve fund for compensated absences, that is, to put some funds away that could be used, for example, when a person retires, and there's a certain payout for various benefits, unused leave, that kind of thing. It would allow us, instead of taking it out of that year's operating budget, to have a fund available to draw from, and that would be under the control of the Board of Selectmen. Again, ongoing activity, updating our water meters around town. Continuing with our lease program, to modernize our vehicles, a lease, five-year lease for a police cruiser, DPW track loader, council on aging van. Some funds to rehab the wastewater treatment plant and pump stations, this is an ongoing activity each year.
On eighteen, Jeff.
Sure.
Shouldn't we put wording in there, possibly, not only through borrowing, but free cash? In case we wanted to take and, or is this just a lease program? That's why it's gotta be to borrow?
This is the lease, that's why.
Okay. All right.
And we've been through the logic and rationale for that, and it's cost-effective for us. Oh, the Article twenty, we have three, what's it called, rotating biological contactors that work at the Sewer Department. Two are ongoing all the time, one's an operational spare. Original equipment, we, over the years now, we've replaced two, and this is the replacement of the third, and it's been in place for, what, thirty-something years? Community Preservation Commission, Committee has by law a requirement to allocate funds in a certain way, at a certain percentage, and this allocates those funds to historical resources, community housing, open space, and a budgeted reserve. And then it also, one, there's a cleanup, because they have to do it in advance, one year, this is for fiscal year fourteen, and then the projection for the next year, same thing, another allocation. Article twenty-three, Community Preservation is proposing to support the, an inventory management and preservation project for the historical museum, under the direction of the Hatfield Historical Society. Community Preservation folks are also supporting, are proposing to support the design of a park on the area adjacent here to Town Hall, just to the north of us, site of the old Smith Academy. Community Preservation's also proposing to allocate funds to support housing, senior housing buy-down assistance program, and Hatfield Currents had a nice piece on that recently, explained it in detail, but essentially buying a couple of units up here at Elm Street, and there's a detailed explanation of how this thing all works, but it will also help us with our affordable housing percentage. I think it jumps from three percent to seven percent by doing this, and that's important for a variety of other reasons. There's another article, Article twenty-six, again, from Community Preservation. If you've been watching the Board of Selectmen sessions, they were in here earlier, Bob Wagner explained that there's now a cost share on some of this, and to, a matching requirement looking, so CPC is proposing to establish an account for this purpose, to help with the five percent match for agricultural preservation restriction matching. There's another article, twenty-seven, from CPC. Again, part of the Phase One activity improvements here at Town Hall, some funds to be used to install an HVAC heating ventilation, air conditioning system, in the build-out in the old gym area here at Town Hall. The, a couple of years back, the Town Meeting adopted Massachusetts general law that prohibits, excuse me, that permits seniors to, with the adoption of a particular law, Chapter one-twenty-seven, Section thirty-nine, or fifty-nine, to work off some of their property tax. This is not, they're not employees, but they'll get a reduction on their property tax, and there's limits as to how many, how much they can earn in a year, and the law establishes, I think it goes by minimum wage. What this Article twenty-eight does is allow representatives of those otherwise qualified individuals to do the work on their behalf, and that's authorized by law. We're proposing to adopt it. For example, if an elderly person's not, otherwise qualifies for the seniors, but not physically able to do that, perhaps one of their family members could represent them and perform that work for them, and, but the senior would get the benefit. In a similar way to the senior work-off program, we're adopting the Massachusetts general law that would make the program also applicable to certain categories of veterans. We're also using some of the free cash that we anticipate at the end of the budget process this year to go towards a Town Hall renovation stabilization fund, which would help us with the Phase Two build-out of the Town Hall. And the next one simply allocates certain funds to that, to that account. The next one is a petition proposing that the town give up control of the Hatfield Community Television activity and turn it over to an independent activity. Someone can make the case for that at Town Meeting. The next article involves establishing a revolving fund for certain activities, this is, we do this every year, building inspector, electrical inspector, plumbing inspector, gas inspection, hazardous materials, those kinds of things. Article thirty-four, again, the, these are, this is essentially the, much of the budget Article thirty-five, asking if there are any other reports from the town of interest. That's, those are the articles.
Very good.
So is the plan then to wait till the thirtieth at our meeting with the financial team to close the warrant?
We're better off to wait until the thirtieth.
Okay.
That way, if something happens, in the meantime, we can change it.
It's fine with me, I just...
Yeah. I will be meeting with Town Council tomorrow, just to put the final touches from a legal standpoint on, on the warrant.
Budget adjustments.
Can we, can we back up just for a second, Paul? On there, you said, something just keeps bothering me about the Planning Board's...
Moratorium.
Solar moratorium there, okay? You said they have to have a public hearing on a moratorium, but can the, can it be submitted by the Board of Selectmen until the Planning Board moves forward on this, to protect the town and its rights right now? I don't think so, but, you know what, I'd have to, I'd have to... See, right now, you can do whatever you want.
Right.
And if you put it, we need to stop that until this moratorium, or until this, the bylaws and everything else go into effect here. So is there another way to get around this, not just eliminate this, but how else can we go about this to say, okay, hold up until this thing gets straightened out? Yeah, well, I mean, I talked to him, you know, about, you know, does the Board of Selectmen have any jurisdiction over this, and, you know, and he said, no.
So it's all up to Planning Board?
It's Planning Board. Okay, can we put a, can we put a stop on a building inspector issuing permits? I don't think so, no. Well, let's find out if we, what we can do to stop this. I honestly don't think the Board of Selectmen can do anything here.
Just for folks listening, what we're talking about is we're back to the solar bylaw issue, and Mr. Lesko has some concern that there won't be a resolution, or might not be a resolution, at Town Meeting, and to avoid, well, to allow for additional time, perhaps, to resolve the issue, the contact is a thing.
Is it that, or are you wondering about from now until Town Meeting?
Well, both.
Well, this would, nothing will happen until Town Meeting, anyway.
Nothing will happen, but somebody could come in any time and get a permit to do whatever they wanted right now on solar.
That's correct.
There's no bylaws to protect that. But let's say if this, if this Article nine was, somebody tabled it, then you'd have no bylaws at all, not even in place, okay? And then we're back to square one, where it'd be similar to this Route Fifty-seven in Agwam, where the solar panels are all around the house, and, you know, they've got ten acres of solar panels, and takes the privacy of the individuals. I don't wanna see that happen. I wanna make sure that our townspeople are protected. I think the only thing, you know, if, if Article nine, the proposed solar bylaw, you know, fails, I really think the only course of action that the town would have, you know, if the Selectmen, you know, think it necessary, would be to hold special Town Meetings just for that purpose. Because I think only, I think only Town Meeting has that authority. Can we ask the Planning Board to maybe schedule a public hearing?
Oh, sure.
I mean, they gotta schedule it within fourteen days.
Yeah.
We have, what, almost a month, so they could schedule it, and this thing could stay on here. Have a public hearing on it.
Yeah.
And keep the article in there.
Well...
It's like double coverage, but I'm very concerned about what can happen.
Mm-hmm. Well, what he just said is, the Planning Board already has a proposal.
Which will be voted up or down?
Which will be voted up or down, and now what I understand is, this moratorium is null and void because of, they already have a plan.
It, yeah.
Even if you had it there.
If we come to a solution on Article nine, absolutely, we don't need the moratorium.
Right.
If we don't come to a solution, and it's tabled, or the, whatever happens on nine that, that it's tabled, and it doesn't become part of our law, our bylaws, then we have the problem, and then it's free range for everybody.
So to pose the question to Town Council, we ask, should the Planning Board's proposal, even after discussion and amendment, end up being tabled, who or how could a moratorium, in what manner could a moratorium on the issuance of any building permits be established? What... What, what article, what wording, if any, by whom, could be placed as an article that would establish a moratorium on issuing permits for solar firms?
See, if we, if we leave the moratorium article after 9, we can always table it ourselves.
That's true.
Okay?
Yeah.
But we want to make sure that it's there. I think we should make sure it's there if we can, and I believe that the planning board has enough time if they would maybe meet and, and have that. Have their meeting, have a public hearing on this, and, and keep the article here just for self-protection here for the town.
Yeah, you, you mentioned the need for a date, which, yeah, there absolutely has to be a date. What's your thinking?
Well, it'd either be a date or until the bylaw is accepted and approved by the Attorney General. That would be your date. That'd be your deadline.
Yeah, I think we're better off using a specific date.
Within, well, it would be within one year, or until the bylaw became in effect. That's, that's how it would be worded. Because that's what you're trying to do. You're trying to protect the town with the bylaw.
Mm-hmm. Okay, well, I'll be, as I said, I'll be meeting with Town Council tomorrow, so we'll, we'll discuss it.
All right, budget adjustments.
My thought here was, we've been through this multiple times. We're, we're at the 90% solution, but there was one error that the school surfaced in that there was a miscommunication about Smith-Vogue tuition and transportation requirements in that when they sent us the number, they double counted the transportation. So that freed up $36,000 that could be used to buy back some of the $41,000 cuts that we made to accommodate that late, 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 late change. As well, the school and the Capital Improvement Planning Committee went back to say that they would address the requirement, I think it was $15,000 for, for a facility change, some cameras and that kind of thing. So that freed up, and they take that out of school choice, as opposed to asking us to take it out of free cash, which we had put in here as a placeholder. So that freed up a total of $36.15, $51,000, that we could now go back and potentially buy back some of the cuts we made to come up, to satisfy the school requirement. Or, you know, and we cut, put in some of those, and/or none of them, or puts, take care of some of them and put some of it into free cash, or more into free cash.
When I talked to John, he said there was, I believe, the way I, I believe I heard him say that there was like $4,000 of an error in total.
No, there was, they double counted 36 twice.
But there was something, in the end, there was only like $4,000 difference.
That was, well, yeah, that was what they should have added to the number that they originally gave us. Instead, they added another $36,000.
So it's 30.
It was only, the bill was only $5,000 more.
Yeah, the actual tuition increase from the previous number was only $4,000, as opposed to $40,000, which was the, the number that they gave us in error, because they had counted the, they counted the transportation twice.
So, so we have some money that we could.
So if then, if there's $40,000, then my recommendation would be to take that 15 out of there for security, the security cameras, and possibly use that, 15 of that from that. I think we should show some kind of good faith on the town's behalf to support the school in regards to the security cameras, security system.
We could do that. That's, that's one option. Let's, here's, here's what I understood we did. The school security, we, we took as free cash, it could go back to, and then the school said they'd cover it down by school choice. So you're right, that's number one, that's one we could buy back, is free cash. Tax title, we took 1,000. EMS training, 3.1, 3.4,000. Facility management, 8,000. Vehicle maintenance, what's it, 4.5,000. Board of Health, 21,000. Veterans benefits, 16. Veterans Memorial, 1. And we increased unemployment trust by 23, so that's, we're not, we're not touching So on the table, one, one option is to put 15 back. If we're going to put some more back in, I'd, I'd recommend we do the facility.
Yeah, I totally agree.
Total, facility management maintenance, we cut 8,000 there. We use that fund all the time.
Bring it back up to 38.
The tax title, we can leave. The EMS training, we could leave. We, we've already cleared with the Veterans Benefits and the Veterans Memorial and Unemployment Trust. Those are all good as we left them.
And left the 17,000 to stay in free cash.
We could, but what about, you were making an issue concerning the Board of Health. Remember, your, if we increased, we put in 10 for the contract support, but if we put in another five, bring it up to half the request.
Well, it's all about, I don't have those figures with me. It's all about the part-time position, then. That's what we're talking about here.
Yeah.
$10,000 won't get us.
So, so I'm just saying, if we put in another five, that would be halfway to what you asked for. It'd be 15.
I think we should discuss that with the Finance Committee at that time.
Well, this is our call.
Well.
This is our call. They can, they can say they don't agree with it.
Yeah, but they said that that's all the Board of Health was going to get, is $10,000, period.
Well, that's, that's going to be their recommendation. This is our budget.
Okay. So the bottom line is.
I'm confused whose budget this is.
I mean, the way the proposal was, was either go with a part-time health agent or give the board members extra money in their, in their stipend to take care of the, and $10,000 didn't even cover the stipend part of it. I think it.
No, we weren't, we weren't touching the stipend. We only addressed the, stipend was left as is, and we reduced the request for the health agent from.
Right, but $10,000 doesn't cut it for a health agent.
Right, so.
Okay.
So we have some additional funds here. We could potentially put some money back in there for it.
All right, and I believe the money that was originally, I forget exactly how much, I think we put in something like 30,000 for a health agent, 32,000, whatever it was. That was for part-time. I think it was 20 hours. So I mean, if we had 10 hours, I'd have to, I'd have to calculate and discuss.
Well, if you did it for 15, you got half, and, you know, you're, you're going to have to go out and.
But then my point is, if we only got half, who's going to pick up the other half of the, the time? You got the Board of Health members picking up the other half, which we're getting screwed again, okay, on the amount of time that we're putting in, because we're putting in astronomical amounts of time now. And then on top of it, I get a, a thing from our board here, that we gave the right-to-know coordinator job to the Board of Health, which is.
By law.
Well, it's not by law. We have to have a right-to-know coordinator in a town, and for some reason, it was put on the Board of Health shoulders.
There's no change. It's always been there.
Yeah, but I've never been appointed to that, ever.
It's, it's always been the Board of, it's the board, it's not an individual. It's the board.
Well, back in, in the early days of right-to-know, they had an individual, which was Bob Oskowitz, that took care of right-to-know. And I did it down in New York, I mean, in Connecticut, when I worked down there for a company. And there's a lot of paperwork involved. What it means is that you have to monitor every piece of paperwork that comes in for chemicals into this town of Hatfield, from every establishment, and every store, vendor, fertilizer company, all of them. You've got to have MSDS sheets to say exactly what materials you have on hand. Every building has to have MSDS sheets in it. You have to have a file, including the Town Hall, including all schools, everybody that deals with chemicals. So if something happens, you can go right to the MSDS sheets, and it tells exactly what needs to be done in the case of an emergency. That's a lot, a lot of work to put on anybody, all right? I mean, that's a full-time job in itself.
There's been no change in six years.
What's that?
There's been no change in six years.
And there's then nothing done in six years, I can tell you that much right now, because the Board of Health did not do that.
I, separately elected.
It's not fair to put that much work on any board, or anybody, okay, without any kind of compensation or any, any help on that. That's not, that's not something you just stick on somebody that, and say, here you go, okay? That's a lot, a lot of work to be involved. But yes, it needs to be done to protect the town. That's why years ago, it fell underneath an individual that used to do that.
Fire department.
Right, no coordinator. So my suggestion is, either we fund the position to deal with that, look into it more, and, and come up with funding source, or however the board wants to deal with it. But it's just not fair to be putting that much work on, on any part-time board. It's not going to happen.
Well.
I'm just bringing up the issue right now, so.
Well, all I did was propose we added additional money to help fund the health agent. If, you know, if you're the chair of the Board of Health and you don't want it, we can leave it at 10.
When I thought about that, you know, the whole thing, the whole thing was, I think we've really got to look at what's happening here in town, okay, on the whole picture. But the health agent, I will take a look at that and get back to the board about the part-time health agent there. We have a meeting, I believe, this week.
Well.
Go on.
Because I've been out of the loop on some of this health department thing. If we're hiring, if we're thinking about hiring somebody to do all the health department work, what's the purpose of the board?
What's the purpose of the board?
Are we just bringing in another person, paying four people? I mean, I know the board, it's not like you're going to be a millionaire being on the Board of Health, I get that, but, but if we're hiring somebody to come in and make you $400 a week, or upwards, why, why would you, why would we need both?
Well, the board, the Board of Health takes care of perk tests, it takes care of Title V inspections, it takes care of, right now, it takes care of everything, and it's, we're way overloaded with the amount of stuff that we have to do. So a part-time position of 22 hours for a health agent would have given us 22 hours of help, that they would do the housing authority inspection, the housing inspections, housing complaints, inspections of the stores, and different restaurants in town, and stuff like that, and do that, the schools and the whole bit. Right now, we're doing it, and it's way, way too much for us. And then if we have, like, H1N1 in the past, and then various things happen throughout the year, between bat bites and dog bites, and, and everything that you've got to go and investigate, and dumpsters overflowing, and, and all this other stuff, you don't have time to do everything. So it doesn't get done. So you have to make a decision, do you want the service, or you don't want the service? The Board of Health can no longer just be, I only got so many hours in a day, and I work three-quarters of the time for the town of Hatfield. And now on top of it, we, our responsibility is to do the right-to-know also, which is a lot, a lot of work involved. It's not getting done, by the way.
Well, I guess that's.
I'll get back.
A no on the increasing the amount for the health agent, after all that?
I'm not saying no. I'm saying that I'd like to get back to you, because it's a matter of either shifting it from there, or shifting it to the Board of Health side of the salary. And that's up to the board, that's not up to me. That has to be voted on at our board meeting.
Well, the other thing is, if we give you that, then we've got to look at the tax, the town collector, who's asked for more.
We already covered that topic.
I know, but I mean, we haven't increased anything with that.
Yep. Well, like I said, you want the service, or you, or you don't want the service?
Well, there's been.
We have laws that we have to go by, and, you know, unfortunately, we don't have the manpower to do the, do the job.
That's why a number of communities are going to regional services, so. Becoming more complicated, more difficult.
I'm not differing with you. I, I agree, that's, you know. But 20 hours, or 20, 20, or part, part of that is only going to give us 10 hours instead of 20 that's needed. So then, that means the board's got to pick up the rest of the slack. And that's what we, we're telling you right now, we, we're just overloaded.
Well, let me do this. I'll move that the board change the source of funding for the school security measure, $15,000, from school choice to free cash.
I'll second that motion.
Okay, motion's been made, seconded. Any discussion? Okay, all in favor?
Aye. I will move that the Board of Selectmen restore $8,000 to the facility management line that we cut earlier, to satisfy the erroneous increase from the school. That just brings it back up to what it was.
I second that motion.
Okay, motions have been made, seconded. Any more discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Now, what are we down to?
The only, well, EMS training was, we're okay leading that cut. We decided, the tax title, we were okay with that. Veterans benefits, Memorial, Unemployment Trust, those were all okay. The only other one, potentially, vehicle maintenance, was 4.5.
Yeah, I mean, the, since we have a newer fleet these days.
Right, that was the rationale.
The vehicle maintenance costs are going down, so.
Okay, we'll leave that.
I think that's a reasonable number.
Let me, let me, let me do this, for, just so we can move forward. I will move that we increase the Board of Health line for the health agent by $5,000 for, makes it a total of $15,000. Meanwhile, that's a motion, then we can talk about the rationale.
Motion made, seconded.
I'll second it.
All right, for discussion.
I don't want to go further.
All right, now, if, you know, we'll still, just, just so we can get on with the books.
Sure.
You know, if, as a result of your discussion with your board, or something, you come back, we could, we'll, we'll all agree to revisit the whole thing.
Okay.
But some, you know, it's, it's the 9th of April, and.
It's, it's the amount of work, Jeff.
I understand, I understand what you're saying.
And that's why we asked for either, either or, and, you know, and the health agent would help us out tremendously, okay? But you can't fund the health agent in half and then expect the board to pick up the other half, because we're not, we just can't do it. Can't do it. With everything that we've got going on.
Well, and I say the additional 5,000, because the Finance Committee had some pushback on anything over 10. Part of that was their view that the whole thing had not been defined yet, hadn't tried it yet, and this might be a way to get buy-in all the way around, although they can make their case in any way they want. To, to show, hey, this works, and maybe over time, we expand that to get it up to the size that the Board of Health feels it really needs.
I love the thinking, because then we end up still doing the work.
Well.
On top of the other.
I'm trying, I don't know.
Thanks, though. Okay.
Okay.
Well, I'm, I'm not for, the only reason I'm not for it is because we were asked by, again, the town collector.
No, 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 we're talking.
No, 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 you don't see the overall.
Okay.
Okay, back when they were bringing in their budgets.
Yeah.
The collector asked for more time, because the workload.
Okay.
Was getting to be where she had to put more out. Was getting to be where she had to put more hours in.
Yeah.
As so the Board of Health. But now, the Board of Health gets an assistant or the, you know, and to me, it isn't right. So that's why I'm against it. I'm not saying the Board of Health doesn't deserve it, but how can I tell one person in Town Hall that is an elected official as the Board of Health, you don't get a dime more, because that's an elected position, but yet, I'm gonna look and say, okay, Board of Health, how much more do you want? And to me, it's wrong. And again, nothing against the Board of Health, but that's, that's how I feel. I either treat everybody the same, or that's it, so. That's how I operate. Sorry.
No, no, that's fine, that's fair.
Okay, a motion's been made, seconded, all in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Nay. Okay, what are we down to now?
Those are the only ones, we leave, leave all the others stand.
Alright.
You didn't make any other changes to this, right?
Nope.
And, and the residual, we add to the free cash that we're, the stabilization fund for Phase Two of Town Hall. The residual of this excess that we, okay?
Yep.
So, is the thought here for the, the total remainder of free cash, would go into that stabilization fund?
I thought we already did that. But this would just increase the amount going towards it.
Well, I don't think there's, was there really any actual discussion about, you know, if all the free cash was going in there? I was assuming that, you know, a large portion of it would. I don't, I don't think we ever really nailed that down. It makes, I mean, it makes sense to me.
Well, what other, what other priority uses would we, at the end?
That would be, that would be my number one priority.
Or do we, how else do we leave it on the books?
It remains as free cash.
What do we have, what do we have available?
Yeah, it just remains as free cash, and it would be counted...
Yeah, I'm saying, what do we have available for free cash?
We don't have to use up all the free cash, you know?
No, 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 no.
I mean, I'm kinda looking at, if something happens amongst the year...
If we didn't use all the free cash, it would, it would just roll over and be counted towards our free cash in the following year.
Well, we could do that, though.
Alright, but you wanna remember one thing, if there's, if you're gonna be borrowing money for a specific project, you'd rather, if you got the free cash, instead of borrowing and spending 2%, 3%, you're better off to pay for it.
Oh, I agree.
If you got the free cash.
Or pay down debt.
Pay down debt, yeah.
Yeah, okay. So it just makes sense to do that.
But I mean, I do agree that we should, we should, you know, we need to create the stabilization fund, and we need to, you know, be putting some, you know, fairly significant money in there. But I think, you know, you know, I think that's really a discussion for the whole financial team, too.
That's fine, we're leaving, leaving loose ends...
What do we have available right now for free cash? Right now? I mean, after all our, whatever, we just...
I think, I think it was about $150,000.
Yeah, and we just, we just took out of the 51, 15, 8, and 5.
We can put that in.
And, and so the rest, the rest of the 51, minus 15, minus 28, uh, yeah, minus 28. 51 minus 28, that'd be some additional...
Actually, it's only the... Bob has come in to talk about the community garden, which is on the agenda, so if we could...
Well, this, we're done, we're done here.
Yeah, move, move him up.
But let's...
Yeah. Well, I think, you know, for those line items, that doesn't affect free cash. The only thing that affects free cash is the...
No, what, what, we, we cut 51, and we're putting back, restoring.
Yeah.
So there was some, still some that we have not restored, that could...
Right, right, yeah. But the only thing that affected free cash is the security system at the school.
Security, okay, alright.
I wanna let John know that we put 15,000 in there, so he doesn't have to deal with the school price.
I will, yeah.
Okay. Alright, so we're gonna leave to the 30th, the discussion of how we use free cash, other than potentially for the Phase Two of the Town Hall. Is that the game plan?
Mm-hmm. All of that? How much, how much are we talking? 17,000? That's about what's left after everything.
You know, it would be in the neighborhood of $150,000.
No, I'm talking about putting it into the stabilization fund. How much money are we talking putting in stabilization?
About $150,000.
Yeah, I think that, all of that, you know, I think that's been the, that's been the assumption.
You mean, you're gonna take all the free cash and dump it into the stabilization for the Town Hall?
Phase Two. Or do you want, that's what I'm saying, do you want to defer that discussion to...
Yeah, let's defer that discussion, because it takes a lot more thought than just that, because if you start depleting all our free cash, and you put it into the account, then you run short. I mean, we can always go back in and, and tell a meeting and take it back out, but still...
But if, if there's a remainder there as free cash, it's, it's there, you know, for immediate use.
I know, but it doesn't mean we have to spend it all.
Right.
Okay.
I'm, I'm, you know, saying if, if, you know, an emergency, you know, something unexpected...
Doing a good job on it now, so.
Yeah. Could be used, you know, for overdrawn accounts at the end of the year.
Alright, yeah, we'll take that up.
Okay, so, a meeting on the 30th with the financial team, we'll close on free cash, we'll close on the warrant, close on the budget. And then you'll do your magic to get everything out. Sounds good to me.
Okay.
Alright.
And the next thing was financial team meeting date, but I guess it's the 20, it's the...
30th.
It's the 30th.
At 6:30 at night?
6:30 is what we schedule.
Alright. What were you saying?
Pardon me?
About the...
Oh, the elementary school garden, that, that's what Bob's coming to talk about.
Oh, alright. Bob? You're here to talk about the elementary schoo-, yeah, I've come up here?
Oh, okay, sure.
You're here to talk about the elementary school garden, right?
Yeah, hi, Bob Wagner, Chair of the Hatfield Ag Commission. Actually, for the record, it's, the school garden is actually a high school Smith Academy project, but it's gonna be over by the elementary school, so. So we had talked to you a couple months ago and submitted a letter about asking that when you rent the property on Billings Way, that we...
We exclude that.
We reserve a small corner, we had asked for up to a quarter of an acre, which probably is more than they'll need, and so the farmer can just take back what the students don't need. But in the two months since we met with you, this project has really moved along. The school, the Smith Academy principal, along with one of the, actually, the economics teacher, and you all know Harrison Bardwell is the student who's taking the lead on coordinating and assembling the other students that'll be involved. And so the idea is that they will begin a, a project, hopefully this year, that will be a long-running program that will move from class, you know, from, you know, grades to grades, not by individual grades, but, you know, basically outlive the kids that are there right now. And what they wanna do is not only have a farm, so to speak, that, you know, is teaching kids about agriculture and farming, the actual practice of farming, but the reason the economics teacher is excited about this is to see the kids understand this as a small business.
Yeah.
And what it takes, both from a farming perspective, but then from a, from just a general business perspective of advertising your product, you know, you've got too much surplus, what do you do with it? If you have a bad year, what happens? The elementary school teachers are excited, because it provides an opportunity for them to do a sort of hands-on touch initiative with their students at that age group. And at the same time, two students at the elementary school have started a composting initiative of the cafeteria waste at the elementary school. And actually, just this week, they got the recycling bins from the recycling center to begin that project. So the idea would be that those composting material would go into this garden, and the hope then is that most of the produce produced by the garden goes into our Fresh Farm-to-School Program and gets served out of the cafeteria. So we're trying to have a closed loop here. So I guess what we're hoping is, is that we can nail down the fact that we would have access to a little bit of that corner of the field that's closest to the corner there by the cemetery, Billings Way, so I guess it would be the southeast corner of that field. And we have farmers, as you know, on the Ag Commission, who are willing to work with the students and the farmer. What I'm hoping is, is that whoever is farming that this year will just plow that corner, and then if need be, we could get someone, in fact, I know of someone in town who's a surveyor to actually, if we need to actually run lines, to just, on a volunteer basis, just, you know, shoot the lines, so that it's clear where the school garden begins and ends, and the rest of the field starts and ends.
Bob, what are they doing the summertime, when school's out?
So the kids are, well, and that's part of the challenge, is that they're gonna organize, you know, basically just like in Who Takes Care of the Gerbil over a spring break, which kids and which families are gonna sort of tend the garden over the summer, but also they're orienting the crops to crops that'll come in in the late summer and fall, so that we'll have, you know, as little that you need to do over the summer in terms of harvesting, and then also have as much as possible that'll come in to get right into the school cafeterias when school starts again in September.
Are they gonna do organic gardening, or basically, or...
I don't know what Harrison's planning on doing on, in that regard, and that would be the kind of decisions that they'll make, and, you know, what they do today might be different than what they'll do next season, or whatever, but those are the kinds of things and, that the kids, and we, I've talked with the principal a lot about this, and the, the idea is to keep the adults out of this as much as possible. And so let the kids sort of realize, and as you know, Harrison's doing a fine job with his garden that he has at his grandfather's farm, so he's pretty experienced already in a lot of this, so.
I thought we left this when you first briefed it, that you and either Town Administrator and DPW were gonna mark off the area specifically, and then Town Administrator was going to ensure that that portion would be deducted from the rental, any rental agreement that we put out for the, for the parcel. Is that...
That, that would be, that would be great. I didn't know if we had gotten to that point specifically in terms of the instructions, but that would be the hope, is that, and, and really, we're talking about a nominal amount, I mean...
It just, well, it just needs to be done, that's what I'm saying.
It just needs to be done, yeah.
And that was, that was the motion.
So has that, has that property been leased again? I mean, is it leased on a multi-year basis, or...
It's annual, isn't it?
Well, it was, it may have been leased on a multi-year basis, never...
Well, I'm not sure.
I know, I thought we did an annual basis.
I thought we did an annual.
We did, until I think this past year or so, and then we went on a multi, so we could plan ahead.
Right, sure, yeah.
Well, Mark Hebert has talked to me about it, because he's been farming it this, this year, so he's, he's expecting, you know, he wants to know what's going on.
Okay.
So I need to talk to him, and...
Okay, well, if I, if you need myself or Tom Petson to talk with Mark, we can, we can do that as well.
You need to delineate the area you're talking about, period.
That's, right, exactly, so that's, whether that's as simple as going out and just sticking some stakes in the ground, or asking somebody to actually shoot some lines, we could...
The only thing, the only thing I'm gonna suggest is, I mean, I think it's a great idea, but I think you wanna be working with the, the person that's gonna rent it, whether it's Mark Hebert or whoever it is, I'm not even sure, just to make sure that there may be pesticides used and herbicides, so if it's drifting, you know, I, I just wanna make sure that everybody's on the understanding that we can rent it, and these farmers do use pesticides, and I just don't want anybody getting us having issues, so.
Did this go out for bid?
Not yet, not yet.
Okay, so you can't give it to anybody until it goes out for bid?
No, we have to put it out to bid, I mean, I have to, I have to find a file on this, it's, you know, it's not something that I'm really familiar with yet.
Larry?
Well, one of the issues has been that we haven't got it out for bid early enough.
Larry?
Wasn't that, wasn't that, not to start a different argument off on a tangent, but was it the property originally, to expand the cemetery, which has no intention whatsoever of providing that property for a while?
The property was donated to the town.
Right.
The attend of the town was, at some point in time, if there, if you need to...
So my two questions are, that's one of the reasons, I think, originally it was year-to-year leasing, because we didn't wanna get into a long-term thing in case we had to expand the cemetery, which, of course, we're away from that, which also wouldn't, why would we have to survey it? I mean, why spend $1,000?
Oh, no, we're just gonna mark off.
No, we're not, yeah.
Yeah, and just put it, put it open, let it happen. And my third question is, why just a quarter acre?
Well...
It seems like if you put, put an acre out there and let them, let them go to town...
Well, I think that...
Tough to manage.
I think it's, it's tough to manage, and, you know, if they start with a quarter of an acre, and then if there's a lot of success, then that would be the thing. I'm hoping that the next time this comes up at a Board of Selectmen's meeting, it's a student representative here saying, you know, we had a lot of success, and we'd like to expand to a half an acre or an acre, and, and let them take it from there. So, so initially, they're talking about just a quarter of acre, and if you're doing it on a year-to-year basis, then that is something that could be built into the next lease.
And even if we did have to expand the cemetery, we could always move that acre or quarter back behind whatever the expansion goes anyway, so...
In fact, Harrison and I have talked about whether or not he would, he thought it would be a good idea to put in any permanent crops, and the only one they would put in would be asparagus, and he was sort of thinking that, at least initially, that's probably not a good idea. So they wanna, you know, and then that, 'cause that, of course, takes three years before you get your first crop anyway, so it could be that by then, we know, have a better idea of what's going on with both the cemetery, and I understand that there might be someday playing fields out there, too, so.
Alright, now, as long as, you guys work together.
Yeah, okay.
We're on the, the understanding that, you know, we do rent, rent it or lease it or whatever, you know, but it's, it's usually, I believe, on a year-to-year.
Yeah, yeah, I mean, it seems to me like, maybe we wanna do it like on a, you know, a three-year, three-year basis, as opposed to...
Well, you need to pull a files.
Yeah, as opposed to...
The thing is, like, well, Larry said that, if they ever wanna expand like 10 feet or 20 feet out, you know, I think that's why we didn't go, go to year-to-year.
We would, we would hope that as part of the town's contribution, that you would consider at least providing this rent-free, but if you do need the rent for that...
No, no, free, no, we're not gonna charge, no. No, 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 no.
Okay, alright. Well, great, well, thank you very much. We're pretty excited about this, it looks like a really, potentially very interesting project that'll involve more than just the kids who are involved on the farm itself, so.
Alright.
Great.
Thanks a lot.
Thank you.
Thanks, Bob, thanks, Bob.
Thanks.
Just, so, one, you're gonna get out the lease?
Mm-hmm.
Two, we're gonna delineate the area that they need, and the lease will reflect...
Reflect that.
I would just throw out there a few...
We're not surveying at any cost.
Just rope it off.
Expect a visit from Mr. Brown. I'm just throwing it out there.
That's okay.
Alright, so we're all set with the budget? Capital Project Report?
Well, we're not all set, we're coming back to it on the 30th.
Well, I need for three. No, I believe me, I know we're not, I know we're not done with it.
Not so fast. Uh, no, we got one more thing, Capital Project.
Yep.
Here's proposed report from... You know, what's missing here was the Capital Improvement Planning Committee's report. Okay, we got the spreadsheet, and there's a report from the Capital Improvement Planning Committee, and this sheet on top of it is... committee, and this sheet on top of it is the Board of Selectmen's report to town meeting. I only say that because that then all complies with the town by law. And this is consistent with what we've included in the budget, in the articles. All right, well, I, I move to, to approve this report of the Board of Selectmen to the town meeting regarding capital budgets for fiscal year 14.
God, this is not from the budget committee itself?
This is.
This is the report that was given to us by your, by the committee, right?
Here, no, let me, let me back up. This spreadsheet, and there's supposed to be in the middle here, a report from the capital improvement planning committee, which will add to it, based, which we've then considered and acted on, and of all the recommendations, this cover sheet is what we, the Board of Selectmen, have decided will go forward to town meeting.
Right.
The capital improvement planning committee only makes a recommendation to the Board of Selectmen. We decide what goes to town meeting. This is what we've decided in our budget and in our articles to go to town meeting.
Right, so what we've decided is to.
Is this right here?
This front page.
Right, only, only.
So to accept the front page, I don't have a problem. I, I didn't go through the whole budget.
No.
In the back here, so I can, I'd second it on the, on the first page.
Yeah, that's all we're doing.
Okay. All right, I just didn't want this to be part of our motion because it's, it's the whole report from the.
Yeah, our bylaw requires the capital improvement planning committee's report goes to town meeting.
Right.
So, so it will go underneath this, but this is the decision letter on all, on all its recommendation. This covered, this copy.
But our vote right now is only on this one page.
That's correct.
Okay, I wanna make that, make sure that.
That's correct.
That's clear. Okay, I can second that on the one page.
Let me just check on one thing here. See, um, this page we have.
No, remember this, the recommendation.
I know, I know, I know. Where, where are we here? The sewer project there. This isn't on here though.
Which one?
Right here, sewer, Long Island, 350. It's not, it is not on here.
That's right, we, we decided.
I just wanted to double check that.
We decided not to.
Okay, okay, motion made, seconded, all in favor?
Aye.
All right.
Okay, so would you just add the, you have a copy of the capital improvement planning committee's narrative report goes on top of this, so it goes in between the two, okay? And that's what goes to town meeting.
All right, appointment process. We had the appointment, I was kinda hoping somebody was gonna be here from the rec committee.
Well, two, two things. Here we had a note from Key. I move that the Board of Selectmen rescind its appointment of Mr. Charles Kellogg to the, to a position on the open space committee.
I'll second that.
Motion made, seconded, all in favor?
Aye. It was an erroneous appointment.
Next we have, what happened is we appointed a person to the rec committee at our last meeting. And now the rec committee said that they wanted somebody else appointed. I'm trying to find the person that they wanted appointed.
Was it they wanted somebody else appointed, or would, there was a list of people that were interested in that if a position came open, they would wanna be.
Well, this is.
Considered for it.
This is the person that.
Mr. Niles.
Mr. Niles is the only one that I found in his packet, and I believe the only one other than the other person we appointed, was it two weeks ago? So anyways, the rec committee has nothing against the person we've appointed, however, they would rather have somebody on that has been wanting to get on that we never knew about. I guess my problem is, what do we wanna do about it? Is there an alternate position, position that we may go with?
The, in good faith, we, staffs put out notices for months now about openings, vacancies, and requested individuals to either identify themselves as interested for appointment and/or reappointment. We were actually trying to close on all the appointments for the town clerk by the end of March. We only got the one interest rece, letter received from the individual we appointed at the last meeting, and in good faith, we acted on it and appointed an otherwise qualified person who is quite interested in, in serving. And now we have a note from the recreation committee outlining their internal process, which I respect, and I think it's an excellent process, but, you know, meanwhile, we've acted in good faith appointing someone else. So I'm, I'm struggling to find a middle ground that, one, we can respect the committee's recommendation because the individual that they're recommending is otherwise quite qualified and interested, obviously, but still.
How many are on that committee?
That's what I'm trying to find here.
Still respect the appointment we've already made in good faith.
My thinking is if the committee would be acceptable to it, maybe have them come in and let's discuss this and go into, add two more people to the committee. If they have five, it'd push it to seven. If they had seven, it'd push it to nine. Maybe that would help them out a little bit too. The only thing is, the more people you get, the higher the quorum, and if people don't participate, then they need to get in touch with us because, you know, people need to be removed if they're not participating on these committees. Big thing is that everybody, you know, there's a lot of work done, and the committees do a wonderful job and a lot of work, and if somebody's not pulling their load, then that's not fair for the rest of the committee, so.
Well, I think, my sense is we all agree that we're not trying to undo, we're trying to make it a win-win for everybody here.
Right, right.
Not trying to undo the appointment previously made.
One, one thing when we do make appointments to different committees, our administrator should, Paul, you should check with the boards to make sure that they don't have anybody on, you know, interested in it, because they, they might be responding directly to them or people might be working with them as a, as a freebie, you know, where they go in, volunteer their time, and in case something ever opens up, you know, they have a chance to get in.
Yeah.
And that might be this case here, so anytime that we have an opening, we should discuss it with the, with the parties involved. And then there's sometimes that people may know something about an individual that we don't know, and we certainly wouldn't wanna appoint the, the person to the committee if, if, you know, the intentions are wrong or something like that. If they're working for the good of the committee, that's one thing, but if they're working against, that's a whole nother. I'm not saying that's the, that's here, but that can happen.
So I, I would, I would then propose for this particular case, we have Town Administrator coordinate with the chair of the recreation committee and, and ask, one, would it be acceptable to them, one, either to increase.
They have seven right now.
To increase the composition from seven to nine of full membership, or to create an alternate position.
Larry?
That's, I'm sorry, that's exactly what I was wondering. Can you guys just create an alternate position?
Well, that's what we, yeah.
As a non-voter, unless somebody doesn't show up for a meeting. That way you don't have to expand any more committees, you can equal on more committees.
I just propose we, I would move that we coordinate that action with the chair of the rec committee and see.
Yeah, definitely.
As a way ahead.
So you'll get back to us at the next meeting, Paul?
Yeah, I will.
Okay.
And my other comment on this is, this is something else, you know, we're talking about this human resource advisory committee. This is another activity where they could help out in terms of vetting applicants for the various appointments. They could be working with the committees. Northampton and other committees have, have a standing board to do that.
I prefer to get input from the various boards than to a committee that has nothing that, if they don't know anything about what the committee does or, or have served on a committee, they don't really know, and they're gonna have to look into it. And then to have them make the decisions for the committee, that's not right either.
No one makes any decisions, only the Board of Direct.
We make the decisions, but they, upon their recommendation. So that's why I say, I think that the committees serve a valuable tool here for us, to give us direction on which way they wanna go.
And they would.
Mm-hmm.
All right.
So we'll go back to that.
Compensation for collector's help.
What's that?
What's that about? I certainly don't know.
Uh, where are we at here? Okay, I asked Paul to put that on. As we all know, Marie, Maro's husband, passed away, and we had to have Jenny and, and.
Edwina?
Edwina do a lot of the work in there, collect and so on and so forth. And I asked them to keep track of their time so they can get compensated, because it's taking away from their position. So I don't know how much time they have involved. If we run over on their budgets, then I think we have to look at the finance committee and ask them for extra money in their budget to compensate for anything that went over here in this time. So that's, that's what this is about. So they're not working for free and, because they shouldn't be. If they're putting time in for the town of Haffield, they should be getting paid for that. And then if they're putting in time to help Marie, and then also extra time to do their normal job, then they should be getting paid, the overtime, whatever the case may be, and the town should be absorbing that.
All right, Paul, can you take care of that?
Mm-hmm.
Find out what was going on?
By law, we're supposed to pay them if they work.
We have to pay them if they work, that's correct.
We gotta find out what they were, because we may have to, I mean, if they're, if they're doing it on assessors, or say Jenny was doing it on assessors time now, we gotta make sure that she isn't getting paid by the assessors or, you know, whatever it is.
I'm saying the assessors can absorb what?
I'm, I'm sorry?
Assessors office can absorb right at this moment.
No, I mean, well, why don't, why don't we get it squared away anyways?
Okay.
Can you handle that?
I think, well, you know.
So the issue is any overtime requirement?
Any overtime required.
Or how it's allocated?
Yeah. Marie is back.
Mm-hmm.
You know, I'm not sure what kinda schedule she's gonna be on here.
So I guess.
I think she's still gonna need a little bit of help next week or two.
I think she will, yeah, yeah.
So, so the issue is to assure that whoever's assisting is, is being properly compensated.
That's correct.
Not.
That's correct.
Good. Cloud computing. It's on.
I didn't put it on there.
Oh, you didn't?
No.
I certainly didn't.
Must've been Ed.
You didn't?
No. Computer backup, that's, hold on for a second. Computer backup, that's one of the things that I asked for. I didn't realize it was gonna be, oh, there, there's a program called cloud computing. What this is, is basically, right now in our town hall, I believe we back up our server once, once a week or a couple times a week, and the tape does not leave the town hall here. What we need to make sure is, we need to look at how we're doing business here and get it backed up off the premises. The school does this, they have theirs backed up by a company in, in Texas, okay? It's off-site, they have it downloaded, and if something goes wrong, all their documentation is there and we can get it back. Right now, the tape, even if we did take it off-site, the machine is in here, but that's okay, we can always get another machine. My point being is, we should back up all our documentation from our server off-site all the time.
What's the cost?
I don't know what the, I'm just, I'm bringing this up for discussion here.
There, you're talking to Quire about this, the cloud computing is simply you can get rid of your servers and off to the cloud. You're on the internet with, with your data. Right now, the Hampshire COG has a, got a grant to do a pilot program, and they're working with Hadley.
Oh, yeah.
And I think.
Chesterfield.
Chesterfield on this, on the cloud computing measure, and they're using the Springfield Data Center. I mean, you could use a data center on the moon, doesn't make it ever square it's located, Texas, anywhere. So maybe we oughta come online and saying we're interested. I, I don't know if we can get into the pilot.
I, I wouldn't.
Because we're, that's beyond the scope of the grant, but, but it's clearly the way to go for the safety and security of our data. We're talking about, we had the fire chief in here, emergency management director, talking about continuity of operations. This place goes down, you'd still have all your data available from, from another location, whether this facility went down or not. Tape readers, who's got tape readers anymore? I don't know, that, that read some of the stuff that you're backing up. It is, it is the right way to go. And it can save you money on purchase of servers.
We're not giving up our computers in the town hall or our servers.
Well, you could.
Well, I don't think we should, because we wanna control our data here.
One of the benefits.
And it's just the backup goes away, goes out.
That's one of the benefits of the cloud computing, that you save your money on, you don't buy servers.
Well, but what's, if we took it all out of town hall and put it somewhere else, doesn't matter where, like you said, and that place burned down, what, what do they do to back it up? Okay? I'd be, I'd rather have our data here and us back it up off-site.
But I, I've, yeah, I, I'm not sure if you're aware about this, Ed, but, you know, a couple, a couple months, a couple months ago, we were, we were having problems with the backup system here in town hall, and, and it was at that point that I, you know, I first realized that we've still got this backup, this tape backup system, so we've, you know, it, it took some effort to get it squared away, but we did finally get it squared away, but I had a conversation.
That was just on email.
Yeah. But I did have a conversation with Peregus, our IT provider, you know, about that, and I said, you know, well, well, we, we need to get away from this, you know, we need to go to, you know, off-site backup. So that was, I had that conversation a couple of months ago, but yeah, he had told me about this HCOG initiative, and he's, he thought that, you know, that should be the, would be the way to go for us, but, you know, I haven't followed through on any, any further than that, but yeah, I think we're all on the same page here.
Well, like I said, I'd be in favor of backing up the data off-site, but I wouldn't be in favor of eliminating our data onsite.
Onsite, yeah. So yeah, it's, it's something we're gonna have to move towards without a doubt.
Okay.
I'm going to, I got, I have a meeting Wednesday afternoon on regional services for the Hampshire Council of Governments, and that's the committee that.
Top it.
Handles this stuff.
Okay.
I'll raise it and we'll see, see what we get for information on costs and how, how long that pilot's gonna go and.
When you do go to that meeting, Jeff, ask them if, if they take off-site, like you deal directly with their server, where do they back it up off-site?
Well.
Okay, that's the question that I wanna know, because.
This is, this is going, well, this is going to the Springfield Data Center, that's where that, that data will go. You know, this is supposed to have.
But you see what I'm saying, as long as it's in two places.
Well, this is supposed to be, supposed to be built in a way that is secure and, I'll, I'll, I'll get additional information.
Get some information.
Sure.
Thank you.
All right. Get it for next budget meeting, so we can spend some more money.
Well.
Well, you're right, I mean, we're thinking about all these things that have to be done to protect us, yeah.
Well, I'm just saying, you know, and then come next, during next, we're gonna say, where, where can we get the money for it?
Yeah, but what you don't realize, Jan, is how much money did it cost us to bring those, bring those emails back up? I bet you it cost a couple thousand dollars.
Oh, no, I'm not saying, I'm not saying that, I'm just saying.
Every time we run into something.
Oh, no, I'm not saying, I'm not saying that, I'm just saying, let's find out what it's gonna cost.
Yeah.
You know, if it's a savings store, hey, that's good.
Sure. No, no, I'm, I'm saying where the money's gonna come from.
Well, I know, but I'm saying, we gotta find out what the cost is gonna be.
Board of Health's gonna pay, isn't it?
There you go.
Yeah.
We can store it right in their room, because they're gonna be gone.
Put you and Jan in there, gonna back up the data.
All right, let's move on here. Okay, town hall renovations, we went through the Terry Blunt ceremony.
No, we didn't go through Terry Blunt.
You're going to Perry, Terry Blunt, Jan's representing us?
Jan is gonna represent us? So, one of, I'm not here. One of the two of you need to go.
And I've got a appointment in the morning and I got Bob Donaldson's thing in the afternoon, so...
Okay, this on the 20th?
Jan, you're gonna take over that and...
You're gonna cover there?
Yep.
All right.
That's when, next Saturday, right?
All right, all right, let me, and let me, let me talk to you a little bit, just an administrative point on that, okay? After this meeting.
Yep.
Okay, great.
All right. Talked about the elementary school garden. Paul?
Okay. Town hall renovations, a little update, we had put the window project out to bid. And in the interim, we had, had an assessment done on, on the, the building for asbestos. And the good news is that the building's relatively clean, because we all knew about the, the asbestos pipe insulation. The tile on, in the front of the building on the, on the main floor is asbestos containing. The Phase One project, it does not affect that part of the building, so we don't need to be concerned about that right now, that, not a big issue anyways. But the building, the, the good news is the building is, is pretty clean. Because, you know, we wanted to have that assessment done ahead of time, because we didn't want to run into a problem in the middle of the project and, you know, run into change orders, which would cost a lot of money. The bad news is that despite what we thought we knew ahead of time, there is asbestos in the glazing, in the windows, in the gym. So, I'm gonna have to, that information was not in the bid package, I'm gonna have to reject all the bids. So, I'm trying to figure out, you know, the best way to handle it at this point, but I think, but I think, I think, you know, probably what I'm going to do, because in order to turn this thing around, it's also gonna, going to pretty much fall into place with the, with the bidding for the, for the main project. So, I'm thinking it probably makes a lot of sense at this point, just to, you know, we're gonna handle this separately, just turn this over to the architect and roll it into the, roll it into the Phase One reconstruction.
So what you're saying is, when the architect designed or said that the windows shall be removed from the premises, they, they didn't put anything in there wording that says, you know, as acceptable codes or, I mean...
No. Yeah, yeah, I mean, it said...
Usually they put wording in there to, to, in case there's anything that, like that, they would have to take care of it.
Yeah, I mean, well, now that we know that those windows are hot, they're gonna have, they're gonna have to be handled by an abatement contractor. That's, an abatement contractor will come in, remove the windows, they'll all go first, and then, you know, temporarily board it up, and then, you know, the, the general contractor will come in later and, and install the new windows.
They won't just take the whole window right out?
They'll take the whole window right out.
Yeah, but glass and all, and then just take it out?
Yeah, I'm, you know, I'm, I'm not sure how exactly they will do it.
Talk to, talk to, uh, Stanley.
Yeah, Stanley and I have already talked about it a lot.
I mean, he's up to, you know, turns out to be...
What does all this mean in terms of schedule?
You know...
Uh, it doesn't really affect the schedule.
I guess what irritates me the most is that, I know when I did my asbestos siding up there, there was specific laws, and then all of a sudden, two years after I got all my siding removed, they said, well, there's not that much asbestos in there, so we're not, we're not gonna, we're not gonna abide by that anymore, we're gonna change the law. And for what little bits in the glazing, you know, in two years or three years, they'll forget about it.
Yeah, this whole, this whole asbestos issue is just, you know, way out of control. You know, the, the, I don't know who came up with these laws, but, you know, they're, they're ridiculous to the nth degree, but that's the law. So, in terms of scheduling, I don't think it will affect anything, because we're, we're gonna, we're looking to put the Phase One town hall renovation project out to bid in, like, two to three weeks. And now this will just be part of it. And, so, you know, I think we're, we're looking at a, you know...
About increased cost?
There will be some increased cost because of the...
Not major?
It won't, it won't be that substantial, I don't think it's gonna, it's not gonna blow us out of the water.
Okay.
But obviously having to, you know, now that, having to hire an abatement contractor coming in at seventy dollars an hour as opposed to thirty for a regular, it's, it's gonna cost us a lot of money. But that's what we gotta do. So, but we're still on schedule. Town hall garage renovations, that project's out to bid. The filed sub-bids are due tomorrow. And the GC bids are due on the 18th, which I think is next Thursday. So, everything is, you know, proceeding accordingly on that, so we'll, we will have a, a good construction figure, you know, by, by the end of next week.
Great.
And on center school, I know that Jim Maisick had sent everybody an email regarding the grant submission, but just, just for the record, I just wanted to bring up that the, the EDF grant for the center school project, you know, has been submitted to the state, I think it was last week. So, now, now it's, wait and see. And that's all I have.
Town report? Where we supposed to have that? Well, I don't know, can't really read them right now.
Oh, no, I, that was in a packet.
I know, this is a different one.
Oh, I think, yeah, the, the one that was in the packet was kinda my first draft.
Okay.
Not the same thing?
Well, it's been expanded somewhat.
I'm sorry, it's yours. All right. Motion to approve?
Second. No, she made statement, all in favor?
Aye.
Aye. How is the town report, and how is that going? I mean, as far as the report of all the committees and everything else coming together on the town report?
Last I talked...
And what are we gonna do with this thing now, this year? Are we actually gonna send it out?
Yeah. Yeah. I think, I think Edwina was just waiting for a couple more reports, it's otherwise, I believe it's pretty much done.
Okay.
She was waiting, she was waiting for our report.
Well, you're, we're not, you asked the question, are we sending this out?
Oh, we'll put it out to bid for...
For next year's report.
I was planning on putting it out for this year.
Oh, I thought you said it was next year, and this one, you were gonna do this one in-house. Do you have it in the budget for this year?
Well, we'll, we'll find the money somewhere.
I know, it's a problem. Okay.
Are we gonna have enough time, by the time you list for bids and everything else?
Yeah, I mean, I have...
Don't you have to have some, how many days for that?
Well, no, we, you know, for this, we just need to, we just need to get some quotes on the phone. Whoever, whoever, you know, yeah, oh, you do? Oh, okay.
What about this request from Four West Associates, Four West Street Associates on PV, follow-up on the PVTA request?
Yeah, I, he, he brought that into my office there a couple of weeks ago. I haven't really had a chance to look at it yet, but, you know, they fi, they finally did respond, you know, they were, they had conducted a, a survey of their, of their clients and, you know, I need to look at it.
Okay, so we'll come back to that?
Yeah, we'll come back to that.
We'll table it for now.
Yeah, but they hadn't, they haven't forgotten, because it's been, it's been a long time since, since they first came in.
We're talking about getting Pioneer Valley Transportation Authority to provide some type of, we've been requested to explore PVTA providing some type of transportation to and from West Street, West Hatfield.
I thought we put that back on them on our last conversation.
We did, and this is part of it, we asked them, what kind of numbers are we talking about, you know, from where, to where?
Right.
Because a lot of this is from East Hampton, Hadley, Amherst, North Hampton.
We don't know, that's why we asked them.
Well, no, it says right in here where they're from.
Yeah, this is in part a response to that request for information.
So, I mean, as far as coming into Hatfield, Pioneer Valley, and Franklin, you know, Franklin County, they have the buses go through all the time, I don't know why they can't coordinate it with them.
Yeah, it may be, I think, you know, well, Hatfield would have to request that.
At the tune of about twenty thousand dollars.
Well, that, that's something we have to, to see. I mean, because I, my understanding is, the Franklin bus comes down Route Five, I think it's like five times a day, and they go to the center, center town in North Hampton. So, it may be a real simple solution to just, you know, you know, request Franklin to stop on Route Five, an official stop. I, from what I understand, they do stop at times, but it's not...
Okay, let's, let's remember one thing.
A hundred yards north of there, I think there's a, where they stop.
Let's remember one thing, every town has what we have, we have the council and aging van, our vans take our people to Springfield, North Hampton, Amherst, doctors, shopping, everything, okay? North Hampton has the same van, people have to contact them and there's no reason they can't, okay? So, I mean, each individually towns do supply elderly people, you know, with vans.
Yeah, but how many people, how, I mean, these people that are listed here may not all be elderly. And as a matter of fact, I know one in there because it says UMass student, unless there's an elderly old student going to UMass.
Probably not.
Just, you know...
But I, I mean, it's...
I know, I know.
We're just trying to help businesses in town as best we can, and we're exploring just what, trying to define the requirement.
What, yeah.
The other thing is...
What would help, what can we do?
We, we had this letter a little while ago from Scott Pomeroy concerning new annual control officer legislation, has some mandatory training, and he's telling us, note that, raising concern, hey, after this year, I may not be able to serve, because there's no way I can spend a hundred twenty hours in, in training. Going back and looking at the law, again, you know, we don't, the town does not fund the training, number one, and it's, as funding is available, with first priority to those with less than a year as an ACO. So, one, it may well be some time before they'd ever even ask someone with fifteen years of service in this job to, to require them to take training. The, the second thing, though, is, we oughta have a little list like this for discussion with Representative Kokot and/or Stan, Senator Rosenberg, of things, the things we might like to see addressed in the legislation, for example, some waiver process such that someone with fifteen years of agri-service doing this is not required to take this introductory hundred twenty hour training. So, just a, just a comment for now.
Maybe have an online training or something like that, just to see how they do and bring them up to speed, and if they don't get a certain, a certain level, then they'd have to take the training, something like that. Okay? Because sometimes, you know, people are doing the job that really don't know...
Yeah, they need to refresh.
Yeah, they need to refresh on some of the laws and stuff that are...
Or, or, or maybe an alternative to no training is, as you say, a refresher for people who've been in this for some period of time. As opposed to everybody going through the...
Right.
Hundred twenty hours, but we'd hate to lose Mr. Pomeroy, and I just bring that up, so, it's something we need, we'll need to deal with, what was coming here.
Okay.
Is that it?
Is this just for our information? What you call it, this complaint, summons complaint?
I'm sorry, Ed?
This summons complaint, is this just for our information? And I, I read some of it, it doesn't really pertain to us.
Yeah, it's just, just for...
Just for information?
Yes, that's all.
Okay. And then, okay, Mike's report, is he up to date and current on all your reports? Paul, he's supposed to give you reports right up to snuff.
I believe so, yes.
You're talking about town accountant, I'm sorry, where are you?
Well, we just, the attorney, I went through the attorney in, in the back where it's for information. And now I'm looking at the town accountant's report.
He did submit timely, well, in, in advance of the deadline, our Schedule A, Snow and Ice report went in September, what else? I think he is...
He's current?
Current for the moment.
Because I know there was one that was due, that was overdue.
Done, the Schedule A.
It affected our cherry sheet numbers?
Schedule A's been, was submitted ahead of that deadline.
Okay.
Uh, now, we still need to bring the town accountant back on the county policy and the internal management control program, which he still owes us.
Okay, this public hearing, just while we're into this here, for, for Nebala over on West Street, that's where they have the storage areas, and he's got the building next to it, and he's got a used car license. I know it's, we issued him a used car license for, I forget how many vehicles on that premises.
Yeah.
What does that do when this storage goes in? Does it take away from that? I'm a little concerned about that.
Well, Mr., our zoning enforcement officer oughta have a look at this, and it's Stanley.
Okay. I don't know if he has or not.
And to see, make sure that...
Paul, will you coordinate that with him and share our concern?
There, there were some, Ed's mentioning, we had some issues a couple of years back about how many vehicles could be on that lot, and we think we got that finally resolved. But now, and using, requesting a significant increase, now, will this take up space that would further reduce the amount authorized?
You're right, that's exactly right. So, do you understand that part, Paul?
Mm-hmm.
Okay, so you'll check with Stanley before the hearing, coming up May first. Okay. All right. Jeff, you got the executive session there?
All right, we will be going into executive session, we will not return...
I've got one more, hold on a second, before we go into that.
I didn't know what that was for.
This here, in the, in the warrant, when I signed the warrant, I went through this. And last year, this contractor, we said will not do any work for the town of Hatfield because he wasn't certified to do, do so. And I just want to bring it to everybody's attention that I had Mike pull out, or he, Mike says he couldn't pull out his name, but he did come and do some work for us, and we paid him ninety dollars. Somehow the check got, got sent out to him and it shouldn't have, because he's not a certified vendor, all right? So...
Without mentioning names?
I, I don't really want to mention names at this point, but...
Needs to be brought to the attention of Director DPW.
Yeah.
Individual has to be properly licensed and insured and...
Well, he didn't have any insurance to work on our vehicles or, or anything like that, and so, and we required that, and he didn't submit it to us, so we said he'd no longer be working on our equipment.
Right.
So if you see, that's what this is for, if you see that name appear on a warrant, you gotta pull it. And Paul, oh, the other thing that, the reason this is in here also is that the head of the department should be signing off on every bill that comes into that office. signing off on every bill that comes into that office, okay? And what I mean, Phil should be going through the bills that are generated from the highway sewer and water and checking off and signing off on them.
Well, they need to be scrutinized.
They need to be... Exactly, exactly. You need to go through them. I used to do that for a living, and it's a lot of work, but still, it needs to be done. Because when you're paying that much money out to vendors, okay, you certainly don't want to have duplicates. I mean, and we shouldn't be... The Board of Selectmen should not be catching these things. This should be caught down lower from us, okay? When we catch it, it's somebody's not doing their job, okay? Somebody's overlooking, and it's not getting done. So what I'd like to do is move that we send a notice to department heads, okay, to make sure that they sign off on all bills coming from their department, okay? And that goes for police, fire, everybody, highway department, and who else is under us? Department heads, council on aging, anybody that's under us, make sure that this is being done. I don't know, what are your motions out there?
Motion made, second.
I'll second.
All in favor?
Aye.
All right.
I'll take care of that.
Thank you, Paul.
I moved that the Board of Selectmen entered executive session to discuss negotiations with non-union personnel under reason to, messages, general law, chapter 38, section 21A. And we will not be returning to open session.
Second. Lasco, aye.
Adamski, aye.
Boil, aye.
Okay, and again, we will not be returning, so.
Thank you, and have a good day.
See you at our next meeting. Thank you.
Motion to adjourn?
Motion to adjourn.